I have called a meeting of the City Commission's Lake Butler to order. A roll call, Mr. Kayson, Mr. Beasley?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Yeah.
Ms. Rovin?
Here.
I'm Jack Shank down here, City Manager.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
And City Attorney here. Okay, I would like to stand for a prayer. I pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to see another day, a beginning and a ending. Thank you for this gathering. Bless and keep us fellowshiping with one another. Thank you for the country that we live in. Continue to bless and keep us all, Lord. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And, Madam Clerk, for the record, the mayor is present but ill and unable to preside. The Vice Mayor is absent, and Mr. Shank has agreed to chair the meeting, but needs a motion to accomplish that first.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Commissioner Jack Shank be Chairperson for the February City Committee meeting.
City Commission.
City Commission, yes.
So. All in favor?
Ah.
Need a motion for approval of agenda format. Is that good?
So.
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Upon recognition by the mayor, any person may address the commission on any subject not included on the agenda. Speakers are requested to give their name and address to the recording clerk for the record and to come forward to the commission table when speaking. Please be as brief as possible and limit your remarks to four minutes. Additional time will be granted by the commission if necessary. No official action can be taken, but direction may be given to staff. Anybody have anything? Okay, item number one, consent agenda, well, items only consent agenda are open for discussion by commission. If there's any desire to do so.
I have, on the, I see on the, the beautification part that we have people to do that may be in violation. How's that going? We have quite a few that's on the list.
Yeah, and he keeps updating it and keeps sending out letters. He's chasing.
All right, okay, I was just wondering, because I know there's quite a few on there. If they need it, those who have been, who have responded and are trying to meet the deadline, if for some reason they need to extend the, you know.
Yep, they just have to work it out with him and it's fine.
Okay, that's all I, that's all I have.
Anything else?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda in one motion.
So. All in favor?
Ah.
Nay? Any nays?
Oh.
Okay. I need, Ms. Owen, I guess, does the financial report for January?
So, on the front of the financial, the cover page is a, you'll see a solar field and new wastewater treatment facility, or wastewater treatment facility, has an example of the one that we're, is currently in the design phase. It's very conceptual, but we were awarded the three million from the Department, from DEP, or the alternate water supply, or a new plan and design. And that is part of the conceptual plan is our AquaSolar. We did visit with, or I myself and our engineering firm visited with Tallahassee last week to request a letter of support and access to the property that we feel it would be the most, the best fit for the new plan. They sent us a, a letter today, a letter of support, letting us know that they're, they look forward to working with us. Let's see.
We need to commend Sarah for going to Tallahassee and generating this with the Department of Corrections. They're, they're interested in pursuing and going forward, and there's still a lot to do with all of that. But she certainly got the ball rolling with a, a letter of support from Darren Fancher, the Director of the Facilities and Maintenance for the Department of Corrections. So, you hope the latter put her ways on that one.
Thanks.
Very good.
Very good, because I know it's time consuming. You have to drive to Cheltenham, that's not a, you know, 30-minute drive. So, we do appreciate that, doing that.
Well, thank you. So, yes, what we did was, it was a very productive conversation where we discussed some technicalities about, about the end, and this property. The same day was the State Revolving Fund for DEP, where our construction one for water meter replacement project was also approved. So, we'll be starting that soon. So, there were two big wins that day. So, in financial reporting, everything is up here, there's nothing drastic that stands out. Rural counties, they still need to send out a few invoices, but that was, that was covered rather nicely. It was a very nice event that took place last month, and had a lot of support from our community. Yeah, like I said, a lot of expenses to our aging infrastructure and some, some car repairs, particularly the City Manager's car, is probably slightly.
You'd operate on that one.
All in favor?
Yeah. Get rid of the correction.
So, having, driving too hard?
I think, I think that's the second vehicle the city has owned for the City Manager. So, I mean, yeah, so I'm.
And the first one was in 1910?
Well, I can't admit that, because I was here for the first one. But it's been quite some time, but.
Yeah, some of the expenses that I've said were allocation issues that's been fixed. Yeah, any questions?
Oh, maybe. Any further discussion? I need a motion to accept the financial reporting for the period of October 1st to January 31st. So.
I'll make a question for that, babe.
Second. Anything? Does it favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Walker, I think this is your.
Yep, I'll take that one. Mayor, acting, pro town, whatever you are. Attaches the preliminary site drawings for the new wastewater treatment plant located near the RNC. I just give this to you to show you where we're at with some of the conceptual drawings. And you can see that we're increasing the capacity of the plant by 25%. We're moving from a little footprint to a much larger footprint, and using solar panels. So, that's just an update. There is no action to be required on that.
At least you can go and get your bribe in the front, like, yes.
Yes, and there's a lot of work to be done yet on all of that. Sarah mentioned the, several of the grants that we've gotten for this, and we're moving forward at a pretty good pace.
What do you expect the lifespan of that facility to be?
Once it's done, 50 years or more?
Yes.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, acting, pro temp. The, the next item is the Asset Management Plan, and we do have the honor of having Florida Rural Water with us, and if we have any questions, we can talk to them about it. But the Asset Management Plan basically is, is developed by them for us, just tell us what weaknesses we have within our water and wastewater system, and how we need to go about in the future to identify and improve our maintenance program. One of the things that we've talked about is that, yes, we do have a lot of issues. And the mayor has an old water pipe that was taken out of the ground about a month ago, which is pretty bad, it corroded, but that's one of the newer ones. But this Asset Management Plan is one that authorizes the City Manager to take all the actions necessary to effectuate the plan. It also talks about the various deficiencies that we have and how we have to continue to maintain and look at the program. And it's a, it's a good plan, and it's well-written, and so I, I'm all in support of approving this resolution so that we can do this. The other, the other caveat to this is that it will have rate increases associated with it, because we'll have to go down in the next five years to talk about rate increases. But we do that during the budget time, and so rather than talk about it now, we're just talking about the maintenance of it and our costs associated with it. Did that cover anything?
All in favor?
Right, part of, part of the reason that we're going to this process and through this is that we've never had, really had a real Asset Management Plan. And over the years, we haven't really done anything with our asset, and it has started to fall apart. Just like any piece of equipment, you've got to maintain it and keep it up, and when it breaks, you've got to fix it and move on, rather than put a Band-Aid on it and hope it lasts. So, we're, we're taking the bull by the horns, and we're going to try to fix and move forward with what we have.
I think that's good, too, by us being proactive and trying to make sure we do the research and development and get this replacement in so it won't affect the customer in the servicing room.
Well, it's, it's nice, it comes in line with the water meter replacement program, and we got the wastewater treatment plant starting up, and now we're going to have a lot of data that we can generate from this, and with our diamond maps that Sarah's running, it all combines and moving on in a great fashion.
Oh, yeah, because I think it'll make things in, in the future a lot easier.
Right.
And we won't have to use a lot of manpower necessarily to find a problem.
Right, the, the hard part is that all of this stuff is occurring underground, and you can't see it.
Right.
And that's hard to explain to people, but it's there, and when your toilet doesn't flush, you'll realize that it's there.
Did the Public Works Director give you something of his plan for?
Yes, and part of what we have to do with the Asset Management Plan is several, several programs that we have to do, the water meter valve replacement program, with a hydrant replacement program. All of that will show up in the capital improvement program when, when you see that in the next month or two. So, we're trying to comply with everything that Florida Rural Water and the Department wants. I think we have so far, so. You have any comments that you want to make, other than that? Other than that, we're good?
I think we're good.
Good.
Any other discussion? Okay, I need a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2020-01 to read by, to be read by Titleman.
Resolution 2020-01, a resolution of the City of Lake Butler, Florida, approving the City of Lake Butler Utility Asset Management and Fiscal Sustainability Plan, AMFS Plan, authorizing the City Manager to take all actions necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing an effective date.
Second. I need, all in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Well, the, well, the next item is a resolution to restrict percentages amounts for the water and wastewater enterprise funds to renew and replacement, and provide for the release by the City Commission, and use by the City Manager in emergency, and provide for undersigned, undesigned fund balance expenditures. What, what this basically is, is looking at the best practices in utility management and utility accounting. So, you have funds set aside, in case you have an emergency break, you've got money that you can handle that. You've got money set aside, you can handle the, whatever piece of equipment is breaking down to, to replace. Often you have it in depreciation, sinking funds, and those kind of things, but this is a good, a good item to have. We apparently approved one of these in 2016, but never did any with it. So, we're going to eliminate that and move to this one here and go forward.
And this was not traded in order, I believe, right?
Yep.
At that time?
Yep.
Any discussion? Need a motion? Opposed? You got a motion in the?
To be read by Titleman.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion to be read by Titleman, okay. Resolution Number 2020-02, a resolution of the City of Lake Butler, Florida, restricting percentage amounts in the water and wastewater enterprise fund for renewal and replacement of components, capital replacement purposes, and contingencies, emergencies, providing for the release of said funds by the City Commission for authorized purposes, providing for the emergency release of funds by the City Manager, providing for under-designated fund expenditures, providing for the recording of the resolution, and providing an effective date.
Seven.
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
The next item is the City Election Qualifying Period. Would like Sarah handle that one.
Yes, it was brought to my attention that we need to establish an election registration officer and a qualifying period for the 2020 election. We, this year, we have seats.
Two seats, I believe, right?
Two seats, four and five. No, one and two, I'm sorry, one and two. The ordinance, I'm sorry, the ordinance says at least 30, not less than 30 days prior to the election, but we still need to take into consideration overseas ballots, which I'm not sure if there are any at this time, but periodically they, there will be some, some overseas military, we have to take into consideration.
What is the date?
What is, the date of the election is, is June?
23rd.
June 23rd, 2020.
Sarah, do you have a recommendation about when the qualifying period should be?
It's supposed to be 28 days, I think, the ordinance.
Yeah, it has to be a minimum of 30 days.
Yes, and, well, actually, I think that first, the, well, it doesn't matter what order it occurs. You set the qualifying dates, and then you need to designate the election official. So, we, there will be, need to be two motions as part of this item.
I would say, I would say a minimum of maybe 45 days just to allow for the, the overseas ballots if there aren't any of that type of.
Do you have dates recommended?
So, for the election, have.
You mean for qualifying?
Yes, for qualifying.
For qualifying, you want to do when?
We could start the recommendation May 4th, that'll be on Monday.
May 4?
Or May 11. Those are some options.
That's noon to May, right?
May 4th, one or another?
Maybe 11.
Maybe 11.
Maybe 11, yeah.
Start on Monday?
Is it?
First and sec, first, second Monday and May.
End of the election on June 23rd?
Yes.
Is there a better time for the staff in the back, even while those weeks work?
Either, either one of those weeks will work. It just, it depends if you want a, a shorter election period, or, or if you'd like an extra week.
What, what do we normally have, the week, right?
We, we, we have.
Done both?
Yes, we have done both, because we've done longer and we've done shorter. This would be, it could compromise shorter again, and you had to, to deal with the absentee ballots.
Well, my thing is, if we have it too long, I'm pretty sure, the people that you want to see, who are you? Or you add it a little longer, like, I don't know. But in the past, we, they couldn't let either way.
Thursday, Sunday?
May 4th, how's that?
Right, to start the campaign?
Yes.
To, for qualifying?
For qualifying.
But the qualifying is May the 4th to May the 11th, so that's on the.
No, May 4th to May the, what, 11th?
For qualifying, yeah. And then the, you came in, I don't know.
Is it, is it a seven-day period? I think it's a four-day period.
No, it is a four-day period, so starting from, from, it would be.
The 4th?
From May 4th.
To the 8th?
Oh, she's tall.
Yes, I'm sorry, either, we could either have qualifying starting on.
The 4th or the 11th.
The 4th or the 11th.
That's where the 11th comes in.
I apologize.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
No, that's fine, you were clear, I think.
I'm about to lose it.
It's a five-day period. You're not clear to me.
Starting at noon off the Monday.
And go to that Friday?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
So, we need a motion to set.
Qualifying here.
Yes, so if you, if you prefer a longer campaign, then we can go with May 4th. There's a chance.
Anybody have a preference?
Anybody here, anybody have a preference?
Dr. Lewis. Dr. Lewis.
I'd like to make an amendment.
The 4th?
Or the 8th.
Okay.
So, you.
That would have been 4th, not.
I'm, no, no, I'm just, I mean, that's why we're discussing it now. I think the 4th to the 8th would be fine.
Can you, can you make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
For May 4th.
Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Nay, or?
Did you say no?
Opposed?
Oh.
Everybody said yes.
So, qualifying will be from May 4th to May 8th, 2020, for the city election. Right now, we need a motion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if the manager has a recommendation about who the election official should be?
Whatever you have done in the past, I don't know who that is.
Sarah, what?
Oh, she would be so good at it.
She really, really, you're the only person, unless she, unless she can get it done and take it back.
Probably have a manager.
Yes, I, we can, yes, we will all, you can appoint me.
Yes.
Yes.
And she'll delegate.
As we.
Because she's the election official, she's merely in charge of the process of conducting the election.
Yes.
She'll have lots of help.
It will be a group effort.
Yes.
Okay, so, she was agent, was a position.
Is the election official, anyway?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, I make the motion that Sarah Owen be the election official for the City of Lake Butler, correct?
Yes.
I second.
Oh, yeah?
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sarah Owen is the elections official.
Okay.
It's a big surprise, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm shocked. Okay, asset management?
Yeah, the next item is just an Asset Management Plan, it's just for information. I've already upgraded all of that, so, even as you see it on here, but I've given it off to Florida Rural Water, and they, they're fine with that, I guess. So, that's just information. Number eight is the, the big one about the future of the drag boat racing. Is that something that this commission would like to do? If so, the event can happen in August. We would have a sanctioned drag race, drag boat racing event. It would, should cost $5,000. We've already raised half of it with donations, and by August, we'll have the full amount raised, but our impact would probably be over time for the guys to clean up or help them, whatever way they can. But the drag boat race, they bring their own, they have their own insurance, they have their own divers, they have all the stuff that they need, that we don't have to do this stuff.
One thing that I liked about the first one today, although it was a little chilly, but we did have a pretty good turnout, and I did hear a lot of positive comments, and this would be a good one, it's a family event, so that's something positive for Lake Butler. I believe that the vendors, they did very well, and I think it was kind of helped showcase Lake Butler a little more as well.
If, if that's your desire to go forward with it, we've got to approve this and then sign the agreement. It happens.
Now, was there anything negative that maybe didn't die? Like, what was it?
We only, we only had one person in, and that person was concerned about the noise.
What about the coordination with the police, law enforcement?
Yep, no, they were fine, yes. At first, they were a little concerned, because they didn't know what to expect, well, we all were.
Right, that's true.
But the end, the end result was, they were very pleased with what we.
Like I said, I've heard a lot of positive comments.
Yeah, and David and Stephen did the vendors for us, they did a great job, got a lot of them out there. The, we had three food trucks, and they all sold out of food, and Simmerdown was packed, so, so, yeah, we had a lot of food, but it was all sold out, so. It was a positive time. Had about 1,000 people.
I think it would be very nice, I would.
And who would be the person who would sign the contract for the city? Mayor and City Manager?
Correct.
Okay. So, we need a motion, if, assuming we want to approve it, we need a motion to approve having the event in August and authorize the City Manager and Mayor to sign the contract with Southern Outlaw Drag Boat Association.
Okay. Okay, I make a motion that we approve for a future drag race boat race event in August of 2020 with the Southern Outlaw Drag Boat Association, and that we, and also authorize the mayor and city manager with the, with a price of $5,000.
Second. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion passes. Looks like we've got a resolution.
Oh, you got, yes, City Manager?
Yeah, I, I heard that between coughs.
Does the City Attorney got any time?
I don't, thank you.
The City Manager?
I submitted my City Manager's monthly report, and you can take a look at that. We've done a lot in the last few months. We've done a lot in the last few months, and so you can read it. Hopefully, it'll be powerful. We, we have painted the city hall and the unit depot, so those all have a fresh face.
Mr. Basely, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Servus? Is ready?
Yeah, you know I got something. Okay, last, we had a farm share last month, oh, no, this month. Uh, we served 321 families. Um, and we had a, we actually had an abundance of food. We also had a movie, and it was well attended as well. So, in March, we're going to have another one, March 14th, farm share, and the movie is going to be Frozen 2. And one more thing, Ms. Owen, I noticed, are we supposed to have an ethics training coming up with soon for this year? Are we doing it though?
You will need to fulfill your ethics requirement. We don't have one scheduled.
It can be done online if you want.
It, it can be done.
Yes, it can be done online.
Is there a time period that we need to have it completed?
September 31st, I think.
Yes, I think it's the calendar year.
Chief wants to close this one.
I got one white.
I, I think I've forwarded you.
White crazy, have one, I don't got that.
This, this 20, this 20 really put those on in the past few years. They posted, we posted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Sarah, the, the Latchford County Commission used to sponsor a workshop. I don't know if they still did, and I don't know if you have any contacts over there, but you might call and see if they are going to do it.
Oh, yeah, because they have to pay us, yeah.
Yeah, you can go online. I think there's a cost associated, but it's not, it's not expensive.
Yeah, through the Leaks website.
Cheaper than you?
Probably.
Okay.
In the time.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have anything, surprisingly. Need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that will adjourn.
Take it. All in favor?
I do too.